Good morning and good gracious, look at all these people. Look at these smiling faces out here. I see a lot of reindeer out there. Well, welcome to Gadsden City Hall and welcome to the Gadsden City Council chambers. We're going to get our meeting started and I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the all for vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham.
President.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Avery.
Here.
Councilman Back.
Here.
Councilman Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Smith to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you the humblest way we know how. Come with bowed heads and humble hearts, thanking you for another day's journey, God, and realizing it was you that woke us up this morning. We still have purpose and destiny here in the earth. I want to thank you for watching over us during the storms, God. Now, even on today, may you, your Holy Spirit, lead and guide us in all of our affairs. We lift up our mayor, we lift up the council, and thank you for all the teachers and students and faculty that is present today. We thank you for your Holy Spirit, who always does the great job, who's always decent and in order, and most of all, help us to always be mindful of the reason for this season that you sent your only son into the world to become the ultimate sacrifice. And we give you the praise, the glory, and all the honor, all that agrees with it. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on December 5th. So moved. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Item 6, the Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of December 1st through the 7th. So moved. Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Agenda item 7 is reserved for proclamations and commendations, and Mayor Ford has some this morning.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. This is a mayor's commendation for our Gadsden City High School marching band. So if you're with our marching band, could you make your way up here through the reindeer? So I'll go ahead and brag about the Christmas parade. For some reason, they're in the rear, but we're going to fix that next year. But they did an excellent job. And if you notice, we go through the parade and then we round 2nd Street or 3rd Street, and we park right there and enjoy everybody coming through. Man, y'all lit it up, and we loved it. Y'all are excellent. I want to read this. On Thursday, November 23, 2023, the Gadsden City High School Marching Titan Band was selected to participate in the sixth ABC Duncan Thanksgiving Day Parade in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. This parade is the nation's oldest Thanksgiving Day Parade dating back to 1920. This year, there were eight marching bands that took part in the parade, and Gadsden City High School was the only entry from southern United States that was chosen. This three-hour parade includes floats, balloons, and entertainment from marching bands to other performers. The route normally runs through Philadelphia Central City, including the famed Benjamin Franklin Parkway, and ends at the City Museum of Arts. Not only did the band get to participate in the parade, they were also able to do some sightseeing activities in New York area and in Washington, DC. Gadsden City's traveling party consisted of 200-plus people, which included band staff, band parents, and siblings. I would like to commend the Gadsden City High School Titan Marching Band Band Director, Chris Benedetti, and Assistant Band Director, Haley Stansky, for facilitating such a tremendous opportunity. There are a lot of syllables in this resolution. Benedetti, did I get that right?
Yes.
Good. I got that one right. Congratulations for being selected and thank you for representing the City of Gadsden so well. So Chris, there's a guy that cuts my hair, Chris Cato, that went with y'all and said, you don't have one problem, that everybody showed up on time, and when you're hurdling that many youth, I get it. So I can't say enough thank yous to you all about what you're doing for our youth. I've heard at one time, a third of Gadsden City High School students are in the band. And not only that, is that right, close to being right? Okay, we'll go with it.
Yeah.
All right. But to see our band and hear other bands talk about it is amazing. So for you to continue on the tradition, we're excited. And listen, I can't say thank you for being a friend, but also thank you for helping our kids.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Thank you. The kids are in finals, so we brought a picture of some of the travelers. And this is Ms. Haley Stansky over here hiding, she thinks she's not getting seen, so.
That's awesome. Yeah. Yeah, y'all want it, let's do it up there.
Okay, yeah, come up here.
I don't think I can get it angled.
Oh, okay, yeah. All right. That'll be fun.
You're lying before the picture, how that comes in.
Oh, that's all right. Y'all look good, that'll save us some time. I'm afraid of reindeer.
Right. Hey, Mayor.
Chris, thank you.
Just real quick, you know, there's roomful of teachers here if you want to get somebody else to read these things. They always do. For the record, I took English 101 three times. Had a little bit to do with my English. All right, let's see. Here is two, is Mr. Blackwell here? Keith, come on up. Keith, you got a haircut for today. So I don't know if y'all know, Keith and John Moore work out together every day in the mornings, and I'm not sure if they like each other, just to be honest. So John, if you'd come on up here with us, you can hand them this money. So we want to thank the council and Keith Blackwell, with our new G, we help sponsor or support or show off our city. Lee, is that correct? And we were able to donate $10,000 to the Gadsden City High School Athletics and to the school system, and we just want to make sure that we give that to you. And this came from the council and the mayor's office. Thank you, Keith.
Certainly want to thank all of you as the council and the mayor, and yeah, he said me and John work out a lot, and I think you said that. Did you say one of us looks like we do, the other one doesn't? One of you said that.
It was Lee.
Okay, Lee, I thought it was.
It was our counselor.
But I will say this, even though I didn't come up here, you know, to speak about the band, I know he said that about the band, and the mayor said, you know, a third or, you know, maybe 25% or so, but the band is a big calling card for our school and school system, and we strongly support our fine arts, especially our band. I tell them all the time that, even when I was principal, people would come from other school systems because they wanted to be in our band. And so that's a huge calling card, so any support that the band gets is certainly warranted, and we appreciate all that, so. And thank you for this as well, too. I want to say that about the band, so thank you.
Mr. Blackwell, I just want to point out, it looks like you're more focused on cardio, and John's probably trying to build bulk. It's a work in progress, work in progress. All right, our next thing, Mr. President, members of the council, is Mr. Matthews, would you come forward, please? With Councilman Minatra and Lieutenant King, they orchestrated this with Mr. Matthews and the Gadsden City Recycling Department. We had a competition amongst the schools, and who would recycle the most cardboard. We are here today to announce the winners. Euro Brown, $500. The junior class, they competed at each level at Gadsden City High School, $500, and Emma Sampson, $500. So here's a check to $1,500. Keith, I don't know where you left. Okay. If y'all divide this out, please, with the three schools, and I put the post-it note to it, but Mr. Matthews, would you like to say something about it, please?
I just want to say it was an honor to do this with the schools. We can't wait to do it again next year. We had so much fun. I hope the kids enjoyed it as much as we did. Again, it brings in money for the city. We ended up getting two bells out of the cardboard. We didn't expect to get this much, and we just can't tell y'all how much we appreciate the schools. And like I said, we're gonna, we're gonna, next year, we're gonna have this even better for y'all. We're gonna have some more activities planned for you kids, and let's get some more cardboard out of these streets and clean the city up. We're proud of y'all. We appreciate it. Thank y'all.
So Mr. Giles is here. Mr. Giles, if you'd come forward, Ms. Holland, if y'all'd like to say something, please.
Mr. Evans.
Mr. Evans, I didn't see him. Where's he? Oh, come on. Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Ford, I just want to add one more thing. We also had a contest for the elementary schools, and we specifically asked the 3rd, 4th, and 5th graders to make something out of recyclable material. And so we have gift cards for the winners of the, of the all eight elementary schools for the winner of the 3rd grade, the 4th grade, and the 5th grade. So I'd like to give those to Assistant Superintendent Menez, and make sure that those elementary schools get their gift cards, because I know it's almost time for school to be out. So thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Katie Holland. I'm the principal at Euro Brown Elementary School, and I want to thank the Public Work Department for helping us with this project. We're very fortunate to have one of the recycling trailers as part of our community as well, and so it's a nod to District 4 as well for their help with, with all of our recycling efforts, and thank you, council, for your support in this program.
Thank you.
I'm Charlton Giles. I'm the principal at Emma Sampson Middle School. I want to thank the council for being involved with this initiative, Mr. Matthews. Well, the way we look at this, especially in middle school, this is the first time where it starts actually resonating with the kids on how to give back to their community, how to have a better planet, and we just want to thank everybody for their support. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Paul Edmanson. I'm assistant principal at Gadsden City High School. I'm here representing Joel Gullidge, who is, has a doctor's appointment today. But, city council, Mayor Ford, thank you so much for supporting Gadsden City High School. I've lived in Gadsden all my life, and it's so refreshing to hear accolades coming from the city council and from the mayor. And I knew years ago, I don't know if Mayor Ford remembers this, but I knew he was going to be a good one, because I'm sitting at a softball tournament in Gulf Shores, and I look over, and there he is, sitting there supporting the Titans. And so, again, thank you so much, and I would like to introduce Aubrey Davis. Aubrey, would you please stand? She is representing the junior class. She's our vice president, so thank you again for being a Titan.
Thank you, Paul.
Yes, I would just like to thank both Councilwoman Minatra and Latham. They have been a fantastic partnership with the Gadsden City Schools and the elementary schools and our reading initiatives, and when they came to us with this, letting us know that the city was behind the school system and that you all were willing to support and wanting to partner with us in making education better, this means a lot to us and a lot to our students, and I think the principals and the teachers all really appreciate all that you're doing for us in Gadsden City Schools, and we really appreciate you. I have a little announcement that I like to make. I don't want to take from the elementaries. Jason, this is bittersweet, but I think you would like to hear this as well. Isaiah McDonald got accepted into the University of Alabama today. He is one of another student that we have at Beautiful Rainbow. So we now have two students with disabilities that have been accepted into a major university in the state of Alabama.
Oh, that's great.
So, thank you. I know you're a big supporter, and a lot of you are a big supporter of Beautiful Rainbow, and we just wanted to make sure that we let you know, so if you get an opportunity, come by and visit him. He'll be there this afternoon, and he's very excited. So War Eagle and Roll Tide.
Come the Iron Bowl next year, I think we could have a bake-off between him and Chris.
That's correct.
And I got Chris and a carrot cake all day long. So War Eagle.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Menez, for sharing that. All right, Mr. President, for the reindeer thing, you know, when we started this agenda and the council got elected, we all tried to talk Councilman Wilson out of taking his hat off, and we didn't win, so I figured what we would do for Christmas, I got some hats, I'm going to pass them out to the council, so I figure if we can't beat them, we'll join them. But we're going to have a Jason Wilson Hat Day in January, where we can all wear them then, but we don't want to wear them in front of our students, so I want to hand these out and thank y'all. Love it. Thank you, sir. You got the grizz going, yeah. Got the grizz. Oh, that is too good. Good-looking hat, too. Yeah, man, that's a sharp. Jason Wilson Hat Day, all right. Well, thank y'all so much, and thank you for your, all of your patience this morning. It's, it's a fun time, anytime we can have students here, and Mr. Edmanson, I agree with you, it is a good day to see the city and the school system. Lock hands and lock arms, it truly is fall for the children. This is, they're our future, and so it's just exciting to be here. That being said, y'all, we have 48 kindergarteners from Euro Brown Elementary School that want to sing some Christmas carols for us, so y'all come up here and get behind these guys, they're going to move out of the way, I think, or y'all can stay there, too, if you want to. And we're, and we're going to have some Christmas carols. They are reindeer. These are the three kindergarten classes from Euro Brown. They've been on a field trip today. They started at the Choice Restaurant, and they had pancakes. Nice. And I'm looking for syrup. I don't see any syrup. Hey, Catherine? Hey, Lawson? I'm sure there's syrup. I think I smell syrup, as a matter of fact. Did you have fun? Did you have fun at the pancakes? And I think they're going to go to the Board of Education, is that right, teachers? And maybe some other places to spread Christmas cheer. I've got a granddaughter out there, so, there she is. Hey, Meredith. I'll take a personal, pleasant moment there, speak to my granddaughter, yeah. I think this is the annual herding of the cats, maybe. This is a... I have more respect every day. Oh, I know. What beautiful faces. I think there's enough room. All right. Ms. Holland, if you have anything you'd like to...
I'm just going to introduce our group.
Sure, when, at the appropriate time, whenever you feel ready.
I've been instructed by Ms. Back, and I do what Ms. Back says, so.
Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, it is with a lot of joy and cheer that I introduce the kindergarten class of Euro Brown Elementary School. Before they share with you what they've been working so hard on every morning, they've been Christmas caroling through the lunchroom, I want to first take just an opportunity to say thank you to our incredible teachers for organizing this event and teaching the students the importance of doing things like this. I want to introduce our kindergarten teachers. We have Ms. Cindy Garner, Ms. Paige Hayes, and Ms. Kim Back. They are our wonderful kindergarten teachers that have worked hard with these students each day. City council, I want to thank you for allowing our students to come and share with you. This has been such a treat for them. They enjoyed the Choice Restaurant this morning, so they got to enjoy breakfast at a staple in Gadsden, Alabama, and they are going to continue on to carol at the Gadsden City School Board Central Office Building. I also want to thank Mr. Blackwell and Ms. Menez for always supporting these efforts and always coming to cheer on our students and be there for them as they participate in these exciting events. So, without further ado, I would like to give you our kindergarten carolers.
You know, Dasher and Dancer and Prancer and Vixen, Comet and Cupid and Donner and Blitzen, but do you recall the most famous reindeer of all? Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer had a very shiny nose, and if you ever saw it, you wouldn't even say it glows. All of the other reindeer used to laugh and call him names. They never let poor Rudolph join any reindeer games. Then one foggy Christmas Eve, Santa came to say, Rudolph with your nose so bright, won't you go and wash later tonight? Then how the reindeer loved him, as he shouted out with glee, "Yuppee!" Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer, you'll go down in his story. We wish you a Merry Christmas, we wish you a Merry Christmas, we wish you a Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year. Good tidings we bring to you and your kids. Good tidings for Christmas and a Happy New Year. We wish you a Merry Christmas, we wish you a Merry Christmas, we wish you a Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year. Merry Christmas.
We wish you a Merry Christmas, too. Thank you for being here.
Good job, guys.
Great job.
Great.
Huh?
I think, Michael, did you already get the picture?
Yeah, you already got the picture. Oh, wow, that was great.
Hey. We're going to go that way.
Have fun. Bye, Meredith. So January 14th, Mayor, is the, is the Jason Wilson Hat Day? That's my birthday, January the 14th. Oh, man. That'll be... All right. I don't say... Funny is, I'm going to show up without a hat that many. And I'm, the whole time, I'm going to look at these heathens. They got no decorum. Oh, well. Well, all right, y'all. We will, what a great morning, the wards, the whole thing. Yeah, we're still in council meeting. We haven't adjourned or anything. We've still got some business to do. Oh, yeah. Well, all right. Well, we will continue in with our order and our agenda. Item 8 is unfinished business. We have none today. Item 9 is a resolution authorizing traffic enforcement agreement. This is an agreement between the City of Gadsden Police Department, the North Central Alabama Highway Safety Office, and the Franklin County Commission. Franklin County has applied for traffic safety grants and is designated as the pass-through agency for safety grants in the 17-county region. The period covered is October 1st, 2023, through September 30th, 2024. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 10 is reserved for new business. I believe we have a few items this morning under new business. You got yours?
Mr. President, I have one legal document, 2023-868, requested by the Engineering Department, amended City Code, Chapter 110, Street Sidewalks and Other Public Spaces, Article for Improving Maintenance, Excavations, Divisions II Permit. And basically, I guess, a short summary is, this gives a partner, partner working relationship with entities that comes in, does repairs that interfere with already completed road projects in the City of Gadsden, and that they will, in return, repave, restructure those roads to its state that the city have already conducted maintenance on them. And so, this here just corrects some language or adds some pieces to an existing ordinance to aid that, so that we can get our streets and roads back to the state that they were in after the City of Gadsden have done its maintenance. So I'll ask today, this be presented for first reading.
All right, there's been a motion to suspend the rules for first reading. Is there a second? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for immediate consideration.
Before, for passage. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right, I believe we have a couple more?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a couple of items. One is item 2023-899 from the Police Department. This is authorizing, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Axon Enterprises, who's the manufacturer of our police... Yeah, sorry about that, Michael. So this is a resolution, again, from, requested by the police office, or the Police Department, that authorizes an agreement with Axon Enterprises, who's the manufacturer of our police department's body cameras. So this is a five-year agreement. It's similar to the agreement that we have in place now, it just extends it out, I believe, through 2029 or 2028. Not only does it include the body cameras, but it also pays for some support functions such as digital storage on a cloud-based server system to maintain a certain amount of historical footage to be compliant with the law. So, again, this is a program that we are, a contract that we actually already have with Axon, and this is just a renewal of that contract. The total amount is $352,525.25, and given the nature of, of the resolution, I would ask that we suspend the rules and consider this under new business today, please.
All right, is there a second? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution under new business today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next one I have is kind of a fun one, Mr. President. This is requested by the Legal Department. This is acknowledging the Gadsden City School employees. And I'm just gonna read this into the record. It's a relatively short acknowledgement. Whereas the City of Gadsden school system is the cornerstone of our community, and the education of our children is necessary for the continued growth and economic development within our city, and whereas teacher well-being has proven to be intrinsically linked to student well-being, and therefore, high teacher morale is vital for the overall well-being of our school system. And whereas the Gadsden City Council finds it necessary to create awareness in our community to support education by recognizing our teachers and educational support staff for their hard work, dedication, and expertise, now therefore be it resolved by the Gadsden City Council, the city's financial support and sponsorship of a Christmas dinner for Gadsden City School employees to help improve the morale of our education workers serves a public purpose. That is the statement. And then it says, I hereby certify that this was duly adopted by the City Council. So essentially, we are acknowledging here with this resolution that recognizing our teachers serves a public purpose is specifically what I'm requesting in this resolution. So with that in mind, we'd like to hold this event, I believe, prior to the Christmas holiday. So I would ask that we suspend the rules and consider this resolution under new business today, please.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution under new business today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Moved to adopt, please.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson and Councilman Avery. That's all the new business today. The item eleven is department reports, committees, or boards. You have any of those this morning?
I think they're all out working.
Yeah, I think you got them out on the, out doing stuff, Mayor. That's great. That's, all right. The item twelve is remarks by Mayor and Council. Mayor Ford, do you want to kick us off this morning?
Yeah, thank you. The department heads are, man, they're busy, busy, busy right now. And I'll tell you a little bit about what's going on. Christmas on the Cusa is happening. We're having Employee Night tonight for all of the council members and the employees from five to seven. Please come. Excuse me. Everyone will get two tickets to skate. It's free for anyone at any time if they just want to come and eat and have a drink and to see the vendors. We've got Mistletoe Market this weekend. There's a lot going on out there. We have food trucks and et cetera. And John Moore and Janet Terrence have done an excellent job with her staff. We have music, we have Santa, we have the Grinch, we have everything for the kids, pictures on the polar bear. It's just a fun place to go. We have a meeting this afternoon with Sweet Trails Alabama. It's a statewide trail plan that we're working on throughout the Etowah County that connects throughout the whole eastern side of the state of Alabama. We are replacing all the lights on seven fifty-nine and four eleven. If you've noticed, the lights have been replaced. There's one thing we've noticed that sometimes the trees have grown too large, so we're trying to do tree management. We've got someone coming in that's looking at planting some additional trees and thinning out some of the dead trees that we don't need along the interstate so we can make it more presentable for people that are coming into town. It's kind of our gateway to Gadsden. One important meeting that we had that we're excited about, we met with ALDOT, the Federal ALDOT, the Federal Department of Transportation, which that meeting we've been trying to work on for quite a while, and we want to thank Mr. Bramlett for coming up here. We met on four eleven, the relocation efforts. If you've been through a project like this, which I have been in the legislature before, you have about a hundred gates you have to go through, and if you get ninety-nine out of a hundred, that's still a no-go. So we have hit about, I'd say, eighty-five gates, and we're eighty-five out of eighty-five. So they were encouraged with the project. They love the project. They love seeing the green space along the river. So we are in the planning phase. We have also gotten back our traffic study. So we're moving faster than what I thought. So this is exciting news for the relocation of four eleven. The million-dollar question is, what's the route? And the route's being worked on right now as we speak. It's not something that we can finagle one way or another. It's something that meets the requirements of the federal DOT and the state DOT. So we're excited about this. I think this is a game changer for Gadsden, Alabama. We'll be able to have connectivity with green space from this current building, which will be a development here in the future, all the way down to the River Campground. So that's, we're excited. That could happen for the citizens of Gadsden. Seven fifty-nine is continuing to move forward. They let us know they received authority to purchase additional properties, up to twenty additional properties. So there's a total of about seventy to seventy-five properties that have to be purchased in that. They've already purchased twenty-five, so this will be another additional fifteen to twenty properties that there'll be. That's the way this works. So there is still in the, going forward with that. So y'all heard before about SHPO, the Historical Preservation Organization, that we got the Corps of Engineer permit. We're just, we're moving ahead. It's, good things are happening. So that's all I got, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. That's some exciting news, and congratulations. All the effort and things that your administration's putting into this is really, really exciting and showing some fruit. So we're very appreciative. Councilwoman Latham?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say thank you to all of the representatives who were here today from the school system. Congratulations to the band and their efforts. We really want to show our support to our teachers. Being a former teacher, it's good to just encourage teachers, especially when teachers have a lot to do, so much more than just teach. You know, so just want to celebrate our teachers and thank the mayor and whoever's involved in the idea of bringing them together and giving them a dinner, just that one night of showing our appreciation to them. And then congratulations to the little reindeers who were here today. It was good to have them enjoy the caroling, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to say that today was a good day of government, and I don't know about you all, but I love our city. A lot of great things are going on right now around the city. It felt good to be in the Christmas parade. I don't know how many people showed up, but it looked like a really good turnout for the parade with the ice skating, all this going on on the falls. So get involved in what's going on around your city, and that's a reflection on the leadership that we have. So we want to thank our mayor, Mayor Ford, his staff, this council as well. I do want to address the families of, if you've got loved ones at Snail Grove that attended there, just know that we are sensitive to your needs and your loved ones. We've had deep discussions, intense discussions with the council and the mayor's office. But just know at the same time, we got a fiduciary responsibility. We want to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars as well. But just know that we do hear you, and we welcome those concerns. So please continue to bring us to us. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. Councilman Avery?
Mr. President, I'll start with acknowledging, I think it was... Sorry. Acknowledging some city employees and department heads. I think it was last week where it's a cleanup effort that I conducted from a bunch of trash just thrown on a particular street that is known for dumping and just illegal dumping and unnecessary trash. So investigation had been conducted. A person had been ticketed, and signage had been placed out along with other measures. So again, for those that know me, know that I have been on this, riding this horse way before council as a community leader. Very, very serious in all that I can do, especially from this position, to make sure that we come down on those that are purposely, purposely throwing trash in our community because it makes no sense. I went around just the other day to ride and see how many trash cans are in the community that can be easily used to throw trash in, and we actually have quite a few. I've even went as far as asking some of the owners just as a trial, just for trial base, if they would just leave their trash cans unlocked as it relates to commercial trash cans to see, just to see if we will get people to utilize the trash cans instead of dirtying up our streets. So again, I'm very, very focused in all gears forward in making sure that we prosecute and whatever else is necessary for those that are illegal dumping and littering in our streets. So thank those department heads and those workers that came out to aid with that effort. Coach Ali Smith, want to give a big ups to him as he's down in Mobile, Alabama, for the All-Star Game. Got a text from him while his daughter was up with the Ura Brown choir singing. So he wanted to give a shout out to his baby, Kalise, and say that daddy was paying attention and watching. So to her and to all her classmates. Our Gadsden City High School football coach wanted to tell you all hello and that he was watching as he's down again for the Allstate, All-Star Game. He's coaching the All-Star Game in Mobile, Alabama. Want to give a big shout out to another Gadsden native, Demaya Taylor, who is crowned the National Miss Juneteenth 2024. To give, and Demaya is a native of Gadsden, eighteen-year-old senior attends Gadsden City High School. She maintains a four-point-oh GPA grade point average. She wants to pursue journaling or enjoy journaling and reading, and then upon graduation, she looks to attend a college with a strong law background, which is University of Alabama. She just needs some recommendations there. And so, just a big shout out to Demaya. She continue on to, again, to put Gadsden on the map in so many different ways. Awesome student. CCRC, which is Carver Community Revitalization Committee, Christmas Parade will be this Saturday, the sixteenth, at 5:30 p.m. The starting point would be the old good year manufactured there on Tuscaloosa Avenue. Will start there, and then it will end at the Carver Square Grounds, where feeding and gifts and things of that nature, Christmas carols and all that stuff will go on there in the square grounds. Again, it will start promptly at 5:30 p.m. I think the deadline had been extended to accept other participants, if you want to be in. So you can contact Sierra King. The number is two-five-six-three-two-eight-four-seven-five-zero. That's two-five-six-three-two-eight-four-seven-five-zero. Finally, I want to, I had a chance to visit with the James and Barry Center for Children Christmas Party, and so I want to give a big shout out to Robin Phillips and all of the staff and volunteers for the work that they do and in helping families. It was a great honor to attend. See, it was a hundred-plus kids and families there. Then they also had an opportunity to go and visit the Christmas at the fall. So a big shout out and thank you to the mayor and council for your contributions or sponsorships, the recommendations to others that helped them to go out and experience that. We have families, believe it or not, that are unable even for those services that we do provide for a very low cost that can't afford. And so, big appreciation to those sponsor businesses, organizations, individuals, and government officials that do extra and beyond to aid families in these times where they feel that they can't do for their family or their children. But there's always a ram in the bush, my grandmother said, used to say. And so thankful to everyone, and I think that's it.
Thank you, Councilman Avery. Councilman Wilson?
I don't have much. I just wanted to say thank you to Fire Chief Reed and Jonah Harris. During the Christmas parade, Councilman Avery and I were walking down the sidewalk. We were one of the first parade floats, and so we were walking down the sidewalk, heading back to where we started, and happened to walk up on a young man having a seizure in the middle of the parade. And so I was able to get on the phone with Jonah Harris and Chief Reed, and they, to watch those guys, you wouldn't believe it, man. I mean, there's thousands of people out there in the middle of a live parade, and they were able to navigate this gator, this John Deere gator vehicle out and over and across the parade route to get to this young man to provide help to him, and then eventually extract him out of that environment so that they could get him some additional help. So it was just impressive to watch them work. So yet another example of our first responders and law enforcement officers doing a great job. So thank y'all for responding so quickly and dealing with all of the hectic nature of trying to perform a rescue operation in the middle of a public parade. So that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Minatra?
I just wanted to make mention, it was a great recycling effort, and I want to thank Will Matthews because it was his idea, and he pushed it through. He measured all of the cardboard that was collected. And even though our big winner was Ura Brown, we have eight elementary schools, and it was quite impressive to see what they were able to do. And I just want to mention, Ura Brown did win the contest for seven hundred and fifty-three pounds of cardboard, but followed closely. Number two was Striplin with six hundred and eighteen pounds of cardboard, and third was Walnut Park with five hundred and thirty-three pounds of cardboard. So we make money on cardboard. We're happy for all that cardboard, and we're going to continue with our recycling efforts in the spring season with our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. President. That was a super fun council meeting, I have to say. That was, from beginning to end now, it was unbelievable. I just love the Christmas spirits going on here in the City of Gadsden this year. I feel like it's just elevated a good bit. I think that's just good for the morale of the community, and I think everybody's having a good time. I want to say, as I was driving down here today, you know, I drove by several crews picking up trash and garbage and stuff out of the streets, and it's just, it's looking a lot better. You know, I've always had a thing where if you keep it clean, it'll stay clean. And I think eventually, we keep this up, and we keep it clean, it'll stay clean. And thanks for these beautiful hats. Love these hats. Thank you. That's all, Mr. President.
They are good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jason.
Well, it has been, it's just been a great day, and I agree with Councilman Smith earlier. He had maybe the comment of the day. I love Gadsden. I think all of us do. That's why we're up here, and that's why we're doing what we're doing. But more importantly, that's why our six hundred employees do what they do. There's a new step in town, and it's due to the mayor and the administration. You can feel it and you can see it, and it's just, it's a joy to be a part of that process. So Mayor, thank you for the leadership and the vision, everything that we're hearing coming out, moving Highway four eleven. I've been twice now to the Christmas on the Cusa. I call it, you know, the ice skating. I showed up for a third-grade group from Ura Brown there on a field trip. All I saw were, and it reminded me of the Charlie Brown Christmas cartoon. All I saw were smiling faces and people skating, and even the ones that were falling were laughing and having fun. And it's just a great feel down there. Tonight, my family and I were all going to the falls. So one night, we could all kind of get together, and we've got a two-year-old, so that's going to be fun to see his face, how he responds to all the millions of lights and the trains. So it's just a great feel. And I want to thank our school system. We had our two interim leaders here today, Keith Blackwell and Sharon Maness, longtime Gadsden City School Board employees. They've both been teachers and principals, and now they're in the administration and leadership. You know, the speed of the gang is the speed of the boss. That's why the City of Gadsden is doing so well, and that's why I think our school system is doing so well. So we have good leadership everywhere we look. We've got our chief of police, Chief Jaggers here every day, I mean, every week at our meetings, and then Chief Reed is out saving people on the sidewalk. I mean, it's just, you know, the speed of the gang is the speed of the boss. And so we have good bosses, and it's just, it's just a real joy and a real pleasure to see how Gadsden is just unfolding into the city that we need to be for our citizens and especially for our children, like these five-year-olds that came here today to sing Christmas carols. They're the future, and they're why we do what we do. And so it couldn't be a better tie-in to have them here today and with all the other students. I mean, I'm proud of our band, outstanding band, to do what they did. And my whole, my family is real big in the band business. My nephew is the band director at Rome High School. My niece is the band director at Oatchee. My brother-in-law was band director at Saks for twenty years before doing thirty years at Rome High School. So I know a little bit about bands, and our band is really the, kind of the talk of the band world, just like our city's the talk of the state. So great things are happening. I want to echo in on the trash pickup or the trash cleanup. I think our city... I want to echo in on the trash pickup or the trash cleanup. I think our city is looking cleaner. I've had two couches on one road in my district in the last week, and I call them spite couches. Somebody's mad that we changed our system and changed our governing and changed our rules, so they're going to show us, and they're going to put their stuff, throw their couch off kind of the side of the road. And so, of course, Public Works goes out and picks it up. And, you know, the only thing I can say is, don't do that. Don't be that person. I mean, don't be the person that gets mad and throws your couch out on the side of the road just because we've changed how we're picking up roadside debris and things. I mean, we're doing it because it requires it from our leadership and from the fiscal responsibility that we hold as elected officials. It's not like we were sitting around and said, how can we make people mad? The mayor's leading us administratively, trying to, how can we run a tighter ship? How can we run a more effective government? And so we're coming up with things. And Mayor Ford said it earlier today, I think, not during the meeting, but leadership requires making hard decisions. And sometimes they're not fun, and sometimes it requires change. And so just don't be that person so reticent to change. It's not that big a deal. If you're so upset about that, I have a truck. Call me, and I'll get my son or somebody to help me load your couch in my truck, and I'll take it to the landfill for you. I'm not afraid to do that, okay? So let's just all act and behave like we're supposed to act and behave like we were brought up and raised by all of our good parents. So hate to kind of end on that kind of a note, but it's just, it's just happening. I mean, I'm getting emails and pictures of these things, and it's just, it's just time to stop. So Mayor, thank you again. Council, thank you all again. And I do want to thank you for our caps. Looking forward to Jason Wilson Cap Day in January. I think we can turn that into a big fundraiser somehow, Mayor. There's... I look forward to that. Yeah, we've got to monetize that for the city somehow.
Pass the cap.
Yeah, there you go. Pass the cap. Everybody put money in the cap. That'll be good. All right. We all spent a great day. Have a great week. Meeting adjourned.